Good evening, welcome to the December 5th, 2022, Saline County Planning and Zoning Commission. Our first item on the agenda is the consent agenda and approval for that for this evening, December 5th. Do I hear a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the consent agenda as per.
Second?
All seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda for this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, it's approval of minutes for October 3rd, I believe it's 3rd. Yeah. 2022, does everybody have a chance to read over those? Any additions or corrections to those? I hear a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from October 3rd.
Okay, second? Okay, it's been moved, moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Hamilton has got the big job of comprehensive plan final review.
No pressure, no.
No, no.
The, the, what we're gonna do is, we're not, I'm not gonna go over the, the whole text, obviously, the whole document. What I'm gonna do is, I've highlighted the areas that we talked about changing and show you the changes that I made. And they're highlighted in the, throughout the document under Chapter 4. And there's a few of them, and I think Chapter 2 as well, I wanted to add, and Chapter 1. But it's, and then we went over Chapter 5, and I'll show you like all the changes that we made based on Justin Mater's input when he was talking about road and bridge amendments and things. The first big thing, I guess, the first big addition that we talked about was adding the, under, there we go. The the Fort Riley unmanned aircraft corridor is, I decided to add that to what was existing for protecting the Smoky Hill Weapons Range under the goals of the plan. The Fort Riley Unmanned Aircraft, if you remember, that was the, the corridor that we talked about way back when we first started. And one of the first things that we're going to do is, once this plan gets adopted, is implementation, the first step in implementation after adoption is mending the zoning regs. And the first thing we're gonna look at is adding a new chapter in our zoning regs that kind of defines that, the provisions that the Fort Riley plan that they put together will, has suggested. And that, so, basically that, I said, and I, I put down the last sentence, it also addresses the recently implemented Fort Riley Unmanned Aircraft Corridor and provisions for development around the corridor. And so that's, that's, that will be the first thing, like I say, that, that will change, so if you could advance it, please. Yeah, keep going till you get some more highlights. A lot of this area is, like I say, the, the vision statement, you can go back up a little bit and just, I wanted to go over the, the vision statement. This hasn't, what I was going to ask is, I said, I, this has not changed as far as, I think that everything, this is still relevant, this vision statement. Saline County is a rural county with a vibrant, with the vibrant city of Salina as a regional economic and cultural center. Scattered small communities linked by paved roads serve as social centers for the operators of thriving farm and ranch operations and provide their residents with the opportunity for a small-town lifestyle. Responsible management of the county's natural and built infrastructure has resulted in retention of agricultural land and uses wooded areas, greenways, open spaces, and efficient maintenance of roadways and the vitality of all the county's communities. So I think that's still relevant today. That vision statement is pretty much accurate for what we want. And so, if you go, go down a little bit further, and guiding principles, I'm not gonna go over those, those really haven't changed. Those are the, again, those are the, the guiding principles that we used when we were reviewing this document last year. If you advance it until you get down to Chapter 4, there we go. Planning goals, under the economy, and this is something that I wanted to include. This is something that you all had wanted me to move from another chapter to include in this section on, on economics or the economy goals. And I said, basically to provide an atmosphere attractive to existing and new businesses and industries that will strengthen the area economy through responsive partnerships, and I included while promoting diverse commercial activities. To this end, the county will support ongoing workforce development and training. Saline County seeks to foster economic growth that does not adversely affect the environment, either physically or aesthetically. And, and this is the connection to the, what I said with the previous, was encourage rural and home occupations compatible with their surrounding land uses. There was a, a reference to home occupations further on in Chapter 4 that you, I think you all had agreed you wanted to see in this, in, under the planning goals and to reflect it in the planning goals as well. So, and this, I think, gives us, I think this is pretty much what you all were requesting, and, and that's why I stuck it there, so. You can go, keep going down and a little bit further down. There we go. And I added, that will be section 9, under Chapter 4, Fort Riley Unmanned Aircraft Corridor, and I'll put the page number in there as well. And you can go on down a little bit. There we go. Under the general land use policies that we talked about, I combined, this is where we start getting into where the areas where I combined some of the goals that were kind of redundant sounding. And so I just had maintain, I changed the wording on this first sentence to say maintain official growth area, primary rural road system and flood insurance rate maps that are updated to include amendments as they occur. And, and the only, the reason I stuck it in there was because it was more appropriate, because it talked about updating growth area maps. And so the, the flood, flood zone map is also one that needs to be updated, so I stuck it in the first, first sentence. Go on and proceed. There we go. The, this was goal G5, if you go back up just one page to G5. Goal, there, policy G5, limit residential development having a density greater than one unit per three acres to Salina's urban service area, community growth areas, and incorporated and unincorporated communities which have land zoned for such use and necessary public utilities and services. And I've added, combined, I should say, consider adopting conservation subdivision regulations. Otherwise, do not allow rezoning and subdivision of property at densities that exceed those established in the applicable zoning district standards. And so I, I made that amendment there. Under G7, I had, I added the sentence at the last sentence, direct highway-oriented businesses to locate in proximity are within one half-mile to the intersections of state highways and paved roads. That was actually a separate policy, and you all had told me just to go ahead and combine it with, with G7. Also, G9, allow commercial and industrial zoning districts in appropriate locations throughout the rural areas so as to provide for businesses that will meet local retail, service, and agricultural needs. And then that's, that's in addition to that allow new industries to be cited in unincorporated areas. Go to, policy G11, I, I combined G11 and another further down and said, I added, provide adequate development potential for a variety of housing types required to meet the housing needs of present and future residents, and adopt standards for affordable housing requirements in each new subdivision. When evaluating need, the county should consider the availability of housing within incorporated communities. That was a policy that was mentioned, either, I think it was either previously or successively to this, this policy. But, policy G12, ensure that manufactured home parks are located and designed to provide for adequate safety and accessibility for residents and public service providers through the conditional use permit process. And I've got, adopt standards for parks and review with any changes to the environmental code. So I threw that in there, we've already got where we have to adopt standards for parks, which we have, we, we do have standards for parks. We've got the, the, in our current zoning regulations. But I added in there to be sure to make changes with any changes to the environmental code. And so if you can just proceed, please, down a little bit. And keep going, there. Policy under Ag, policy Ag3, do not allow development of property within the flood plain. That's something I added because of when it talks to stress retention of natural drainage patterns. I wanted to include also about the not locating development within the flood plain. The, under policy Ag5, Ag5, I, I added, require qualified professional to submit an environmental impact study. And that was in response to, we had, you know, we had require an environmental impact study that includes a mitigation plan. I wanted to say a qualified professional because any, you know, anybody can say that they're, you know, that they review environmental impact studies or write environmental impact studies. But it's, I just wanted to make sure that we got someone who was qualified to do that for those particular instances, and that's why I stuck that in there. Does that sound, sound okay to you guys? A qualified professional. Under Ag6, coordinate with the state and federal agencies for all state-licensed confined animal operations. Currently, the way that, that it's worded is it's, it's basic, it doesn't mention state or federal agencies for confined animal operations, it just says confined animal operations require a conditional use permit. And I, I always try to make sure, since the state tends to on confined animal operations, the state tends to override, or they're the licensing entity for those. And I just wanted to make sure, I mentioned something in there about making sure the state and the feds were, were coordinated with county staff, so.
Okay, go ahead and proceed.
There we go. Coordinate with private property owners and other agencies to preserve natural areas in green belts, open spaces for use of wildlife refuge and passive recreational areas. That was actually added from another section. I took, I cut paste in that area in Ag8. And then Ag9, I says, raise public awareness that normal agricultural and environmental nuisances come with rural living and, and minimize the impact of development in rural areas on agricultural operations. Reason I say that, right, raise public awareness, is because it just says something currently, it says something like contact and coordinate with those individuals that may be impacted by normal agricultural and environmental nuisances. Well, that's, that doesn't help us out too much. I said, I wanted to be just, raise public awareness, that sounds better.
Tim, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
You still have the egg use notice when somebody wants to do, have a, get a building permit for a home?
Yeah, we still have that, they have to sign off on it.
Yeah, that, that's a big part of this right here, obviously, so, thank you.
Yeah. And go ahead and proceed. Keep going. Going, no changes here, there we go. Rural agri, rural residential development shall comply with public improvement requirements. And I changed the, the table was G3, and it's actually changed, been changed to G2, it's, they, they had it labeled wrong. Policy RA4 is, I've changed that 100-year or 1% annual chance flood event because the, that's the, that's FEMA's kind of pet peeve now, is people saying the 100-year flood plain. Well, that's the most commonly known, you know, it's known as the 100-year flood plain. And so to get people used to the way that FEMA wants peo, wants people like me to call, you know, that, that the flood plain, it's the, it's now 1% annual chance flood event. That's how FEMA wants, wants people to, 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 to know it by. 100-year flood plain is, is, they feel is a misnomer because it's, it gets confusing. It's, oh, okay, this happens once every 100 years, but, and they, they, they go through, when I, at all these flood plain conferences, they give me these, you know, little demonstrations, you know, showing, you know, the probability of 100-year flood plain within 100 years is more than one every 100 years, and that's what they're, so they wanna say 1% annual chance flood. Is more accurate, so, anyway. Go on down. Go on down, no changes there. Rural communities has not changed, none of these have changed because they're all basically, they're still valid. I, community growth area, keep going down, I think that's still valid, every one of those, I think we're, we're fine. Airport is the same, same as the Smoky Hill Weapons Range. But if you go down to the next one, which is, let's see here, 9, that's new. This is the Fort Riley Unmanned Aircraft, this is all new. I've got the following policies are intended to protect unmanned aircraft and personnel within the four-mile UAS corridor by discouraging activities and uses within and adjacent to the corridor that would be detrimental to normal operations. And I go into the policies, UA1, the land use establishes zoning overlay district designation for the UAS corridor provisions should be considered for but not limited to renewable energy, vertical obstructions, frequency encroachment. And policy 2 is coordination, include Fort Riley and notification of any conditional use or zoning case and any amendments within the UAS corridor. Seek comment and technical support from Fort Riley on any land use decisions in the area, which I do. I think the, one of the most recent cases that we had come before you for conditional use was actually in the, it wasn't in this zone, but it was in the, within the, 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 the other area, the, the military training area. And I had to notify them, and I found out who to contact, finally, I've got contacts now for Fort Riley to, to contact on that, I didn't before, and I, I had to kinda like do some digging and find out who I need to talk to and submit these kind of responses to, so I've, I've got them. So, the policy 3 is, under education, it's provide outreach to the public to inform property owners of the UAS corridor and what activities are allowed or prohibited. UA4 is communication, maintain a list of contacts at Fort Riley with other county, and, and other counties within the UAS corridor to maintain a regional and, and update on a regular basis. So, and that's something that's, that shouldn't be too hard to do now that I know who to talk to over there. So, and you can go ahead and proceed to the next one. Okay, and now these tables, I'll show you, these have not changed. They're still valid, they're still enforced as they are written because there's not really been any major change. So we've got rural communities and their zoning districts that they could be, you know, amended to have or include in their, in their, within their boundaries. So, you know, keep going down, and same with community growth areas, RA is the one that is, is typically the, the zoning district that would be allowed in that area. Keep going down, and there's one I wanted to see. Not in there, it's public improvement requirements, those are, these, these are currently enforced, and I don't think that there's been any need to really change it because it's been working really well so far as far as access, wastewater, water, fire protection, all of that as it relates to the various zoning districts and what's required for whenever they do a rezoning or a replat, so. Go ahead and proceed. And Chapter 5 is transportation, this is the one that, if you remember, Justin Mater had talked to you guys about the last, that one last closing meeting that we had on this. And, and none of this has changed in the opening, but I'll show you where I've included the changes that he was suggesting or, or was making in his requirements or his standards right here. So it says transportation policies, I've got coordinate with road and bridge department on all required development permits. I spelled it out that way because the way it was, it's currently written, it doesn't sound, it just doesn't sound right, it didn't sound right. And I said, I wanted to make sure, coordinate with road and bridge on, I think it was, it said on all, all necessary state licensed and licenses and permits, and I didn't like the way that was worded, so I just changed it to, you know, all required development permits that come through us. So, policy T5 is to allow existing shared driveways. This is, this is due, I've made this amendment based on the most recent changes we made that you all had to the address policies that I pointed out to you all. It's allow existing shared driveways as legally non-conforming but prohibit establishment of any new shared driveways in accordance with any adopted addressing policy, which shared driveways we don't allow anymore. It's, but I said, what we do allow for existing ones that if somebody wants to, you know, share a driveway on, for two existing adjacent parcels or existing adjacent properties, we can, we can work with them on it. But typically for new driveways, we don't allow shared drives, so. I just wanted to point that out, I wanted to be consistent with our other policies that we've adopted, so. Go ahead and proceed. These haven't changed. It's not, yeah, keep going. There we go. This is where I wanted to, he's got, right now, it's, we've got secondary roads and highways. And under that, he's got minor, we've got minor collector roads or highways. I wanted to go ahead and distinguish and say major collector or secondary roads or highways because, just to distinguish between the two, because why say, with every minor, there's gotta be a major. So I wanted to include that as, and, and that's why I stuck that in there, and it's consistent with what I think Justin was, was, was getting at for that. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and you can just go on down a little bit further. Next page. Next, yeah, it's gonna get in the tables, here we go. And this is where I've got that major collector, and he's got the minor collectors. The numbers I have highlighted, it's currently under the major collector, secondary roads or highways. The numbers I have highlighted, it's currently under the major collector, secondary roads or highways. Minimum right of way width in feet, it's currently eighty, but it's changing to one hundred. So I've got eighty to one hundred because one hundred would be for any new like additions to, you know, existing highways. Whereas the eighty would be more applicable to, you know, roads that they haven't gotten to yet to make that expansion. So, we're but they would still be considered legal at eighty. So I just wanted to say eighty to one hundred just to cover all those those roads that were, you know, secondary. Minor collector roads or highways, that's currently sixty. And I changed it to eighty to reflect his changes. So, and go on, go on down. Next page there. And this is just a high tra- this is the traffic volume on gravel surface roads. And just gives you the mileage that they're, you know, that's where the the highest traffic is. And I've updated it. There really hasn't been much, if any, change to this table and these numbers. And it's still pretty much the same based on what I was able to kind of discern from both K dot and the road and bridge department. So, if you go down just a little bit, I was going to show it's we're looking at nine, a total of nineteen point five miles that are affected with the heaviest traffic in in the rural areas of the county, the unpaved. So, with that, I just go on down a little bit further. Community facilities and services, that just goes over, like under here, it says I've got the policy CF one. And this is where this is what I kind of wanted to include because I know that you all had administration had expressed, you know, adding some some language in there that would kind of help for those areas that were like, let's say, lacking in in broadband and that sort of thing. I think we had talked about this. And what I wanted to do is add some language in there. It says, I I included energy diversity because we didn't have anything on wind farms or any or solar or anything. So I just said continue to encourage energy diversity. And I've got expansion of all facilities in underserved areas where feasible. And when possible, consider demands created by planned uses, populations and needs. And I think that should cover us for that in in terms of if we ever wanted to adopt a policy specific to, let's say, broadband, we could refer to this. So, you go, go ahead and proceed. These haven't changed. Is there still, you know, being implemented? The implementation part is, again, this is something that we have everything that 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 this chapter talks about is still in progress. So the implementation, when you go down a little bit further and you start seeing the tables that they talk about improving zoning. Periodic amendments, that's what we're we're doing now. This is a major amendment, but it's a periodic amendments means every year kind of come to you guys with some changes and see if there's any changes that have to be made or anything and anything that you you feel would have to be addressed in the plan. That's that includes the annual review and monitoring and benchmarks and all of these different things. These are all still valid. And there's what I would like to try to start implementing on a regular basis. I know we've done it a couple of times since I've been here. But it's that I would like to kind of do an annual review on issues that you guys might have with the plan. The implementation program, this goes over the and this first item here, update zoning regulations. That's going to be the first thing that we'll do. I said it's immediate and ongoing. We've made some periodic amendments over the past few years. But it's for sure, once this plan gets adopted to form by the county commission. Like I was telling you earlier, I'm going to come to you next year with and we're going to update the full zoning regulations and just take it a chapter at a time. So that's the usually that's the first thing that's 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 part of the implementation of the of the comp plan is update your zoning and subdivision regulations. So just wanted to point that out to you guys. So, just to proceed on down. Yeah, update subdivision resolution, same situation. We'll do that after the 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 zoning regs. Any interlocal agreements that we might have with the city, that's done periodically. That's, you know, we that we already, we already do that. That's ongoing. Keep keep on going. Capital improvement program is something that's maintained, I think. Those are usually maintained by road and bridge department or or public, public works type departments. And so it's sometimes the planning and zoning does maintain those, but we don't here. I think that's maintained by, you know, another other departments. But it's just in it's included in this to kind of like, you know, make sure that, you know, all the all the departments are kind of on board with this with the plan, which they, you know, which we have been for a number of years anyway. This is all kind of old hat. Just go down, please. Okay, here we go. This is the fun part. This is the second part I wanted to get into. This is a, this is the appendix area. And it just, this goes over the census data and economic data that have changed over the past ten years or so. And if you go down just a little bit, you'll start seeing it starts talking about things like demog- demographics is what it starts with. Population and population projection. And if you just keep going down there, there we go. This is graph shows our population going all the way back to eighteen seventy. You can see we've, we've had a little bit of a dip since two thousand ten. And in twenty one, we went, if you scroll down just a little bit, I want to get those percentages right there. We've gone down three point one percent since two thousand ten. So, a lot of the population numbers that you'll see on this are going to like where you look at, you know, I think in general, where I'll show you further down where I where I have the 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 population pyramid. I'll kind of explain to you. And well, this this is, this gives you the the rural rural and urban housing units based on the census from two thousand twenty. I've got a two thousand twenty and two thousand ten comparison. You can see where we've gone up in the single family detached units. We've gone up about six percent since two thousand ten, gone up slightly on the two unit. And this, we've, five units or above, that would be, you know, any kind of multi-family type situation. That's actually, that's actually gone down or slightly to seven percent. Mobile homes have also gone down. The total, however, because of our single family units that have been built over the past ten years has makes up for the majority, I think, of that. And so you've got, you know, twenty four thousand one hundred and two total versus the twenty one nine thirty two back in two thousand ten for the the number of of units total. And I, and so if you go go down a little bit further. And it talks about racial makeup and all that. And I said I was going to come down just a little bit. There we go. This talks about residential building permits. I've included these past three years to kind of show you because of the COVID situation. This is all rural. This is from my department, two thousand nineteen. A single, a single family residential in nineteen was eight. With three residential, three of those being residential replacements. And then twenty and twenty one, you can see where the 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 number has remained steady. And it went up quite, you know, I don't want to say quite a bit, but we did have an increase there despite the the COVID situation. And I thought that was rather interesting. And I think this year, what's Kathleen, what I I hate to put you on the spot. How many are, do we have this year? Do you know?
I don't remember how many new homes, new single family homes we have. I just know that the total building permits are up.
Yeah, they're up considerably overall. But we, this gets into countywide housing units by tenure. You've got the the vast majority being owner occupied. And that's, it's gone up. Owner occupied has increased. And that's corresponds with, I guess, the increase in the single family homes as well. Then you have renter occupied, which has gone down slightly as well. And the vacant has stayed stable at seven point five percent. So you have a total of twenty, you have slightly more as far as the tenure units, twenty four thousand seventy six than were in two thousand ten. Which was twenty twenty four thousand forty five, just a slight increase in twenty. But that's, you know, come to be expected. So, go down just a little bit. Here we go with the population distribution. We do have, you know, an aging population as most counties do now. However, because of, if you notice the, so like the fifty five to sixty four rate is is over is probably close to eight percent, you know, seven and a half, somewhere around there. But if you notice that the twenty to twenty four and the twenty five to twenty nine cohorts are, they're up there too. You know, they're about, you know, six, seven percent. And what that means is that I attribute that to whenever the population declines, overall population declines. It causes all those cohort cohorts to kind of increase in their representation. They're, you know, make up a higher percentage for each age range. So it's, so when you have a certain number of people leaving, that will kind of cause this kind of misnomer of saying, okay, well, the the those that are like, let's say, the fifty to the sixty four range or fifty five to sixty four range. Yeah, that's that's the majority of the population, but it's offset by, because of the population decline, those those younger age cohorts have started to to make a a pretty good representation too. Which is good, you know, I mean, usually you want to see something somewhere around there, but you want to see a lot, you know, it could be better, but I said, like I say, it's that phenomena is because of that that overall decrease in population of three point one percent in ten years. So, so go go down just a little bit. Race and ethnicity, it talks about, and we can go on back down a little bit further. Employment. And there's going to be some stats I've got down here. Exhibit B, this is giving you comparison between Kansas and how and Celine County, how Celine County compares to the state with regard to the the various industries. You can see that we're Celine County is as far as percentage wise for like, let's say, ag. We're, we're, we're doing okay, you know. But construction, you know, you've got in two thousand twenty, it was four point eight, it's gone down a little bit. So those red, the red numbers indicate a decrease in like, let's say, construction, manufacturing, wholesale trade. Retail trade has also gone down, but we've gone up in transportation and warehousing. We've gone up in for sure in education, health and social services. And as well as arts and entertainment, we've gone up just slightly under the other public service or other services other than public administration. And so it's our breakdown for for how our employment's broken down for for the specific industries. This a lot of, I'll be very honest with you, between two thousand ten and two thousand twenty. Some of these numbers, I'm, I I agree with, these are from the census. But it's, the census, the two thousand twenty census, a lot of that data was gathered during the height of the COVID thing. And so I'm, it makes me wonder how much of those responses, you know, were affected by, you know, either them not, you know, getting a full response from people or what, you know, so this so that's all I'm, you know, that's why I have a kind of a question mark by all these, all this information I got from the Census Bureau. Is because it happened during the height of the pandemic and there was probably reluctance and they probably couldn't have they didn't have probably the people to process. And that's the first thing I think of is they didn't have the the people to process. The numbers are are willing to go out and actually do the field work because of the pandemic. So, I don't know. It's just, but I've, this is as they've presented it. And so that's how I'm presenting it to you. I just have question marks about it. So, you go on down. Right there. Annual employment. In last year, we were at three point eight unemployment rate. And it breaks it down by civilian labor force, the number of jobs. And the number unemployed and the unemployment rate. So, go down, you can go on down. And this is countywide median incomes. You can see that based between the United States, Kansas and Celine County. Celine County is is fifty one thousand eight thirty, whereas the state is sixty four one twenty four for the median. And you can see those numbers there, how between the median household income, median family income. And that's how it's broken down between all three categories, United States, the state and the county. So, environmental assessment, this is just a general discussion about the geography, the topography and all the various environmental aspects of the county that hasn't changed. None of that was changed. I made sure that they, the maps matched with what the text was saying. So I went through that and made sure all that was straight. So if you go down just a little bit further. And it talks about geology and it'll talk about hydrology, which is the rivers and lakes. And mineral resources have not changed. Soils, I wish Paul were here, I would, because I think that he was, he kind of contributed to this back in, you know, in the past possibly. And so it's breaks down soil table for Celine County. The various classifications, talks about wildlife and vegetation. And I updated that. And I updated that. I updated the endangered species list and the species in need of conservation. I, that's all been updated. And we start talking about agriculture and the farming industry and the number and the size of farms. We go down and there's a discussion there. And I did a comparison here, a number of farms and the size in acres. That's the purple or bluish color is the average farm size. The red is the median farm size and the, the other color, the lighter color is the number of farms. So you can see that the number of farms actually have decreased since two thousand seven. And the reason I stopped at seventeen was because that's based on the, the census of agriculture that's, that was put out. And the last version was in twenty seventeen. And that's why that's the only data that I've got on that. So it will be interesting when that comes out again, this next version and see what, how many farms, if that's changed any in the past five years or so. So if you go down. Talks about livestock and crops. I've updated all of that. I included this, this is new. This was not in the current plan. This exhibit is the value of agricultural sales per thousand. So we've got farms by value of sales. You can see that the, the, the two extremes, the, the less than two, less than twenty five hundred dollars and more than one hundred thousand dollar categories are the two prominent categories there. And I said everything in between, that's where is, is, it kind of breaks down, you know, fifty thousand, you know, ten thousand to twenty four thousand, twenty five to forty nine, fifty to ninety nine and more than a hundred. And again, this was based on twenty seventeen data. I don't have the, once they update that, and it's probably going to be next year, I'll, I'll probably take, I'll probably amend that and, and let you guys know and see if we want to include that twenty twenty one or twenty two data, if whatever they do. Land use assessment, we start getting into population projections now. And this is our population projections for going to twenty fifty. And this is, we used the Kansas Budget Division, Kansas Water Office and Planning Works, which was our consultant back in two thousand eight and, and again in two thousand fourteen. And what we did is we took, I took, I maintained their point four percent average annual growth rate because it's conservative. And you want to always on population projections, it's better to be conservative than to be too ambitious and say that we're going to be, you know, so that in the event that we do have a big increase, I said, it's, it's a pleasant surprise. So, but I chose the conservative route on that. And you can see that the, the Kansas Water Office doesn't do that anymore. What I did is I, I used the, actually, that's Kansas Division of Water Resources now handles the, those numbers. But I took Kansas Water Offices, they had a map from about two thousand twelve or something that showed where the population projection across the state was going to be and by twenty fifty. And I used that as kind of a gauge for this. So, but that's, that's a development, development projections. And I've got recent residential growth trends and housing projections and all of that I updated. Household size, projected growth trends. I've, I updated all of this. And if you go down a little bit further, we're getting into land use percentages in the county based on acreages. And I've broken it down, twenty thirteen and twenty twenty two. The reason I chose twenty thirteen was because that was the last time that this plan was amended with the data. So I just used their twenty thirteen data and I added the twenty twenty two data to show that we've, you know, a slight decrease in ag and increase in residential, which is consistent with what I was telling you about. You have commercial has also increased. Public has gone down. Incorporated has increased due to, you know, obviously annexations and that sort of thing. But unincorporated has stayed consistent and unincorporated, meaning unincorporated towns that are, you know, the ones that are under our jurisdiction. So there hasn't been, you know, any, you know, that, that has not changed. Community facilities assessment, I did water. And we're starting to get into like the water studies now. The Saline County Water Districts, it breaks down the water districts, water suppliers with water use statistics from twenty seventeen. Again, it's the municipal water report, that's from twenty seventeen. They haven't had a most more recent one, I don't think, put out to my knowledge. And so it goes to gallons per day, five year regional average for each and the difference between the, you know, five year average and the individual water district's output. So wherever you see a minus sign, that means that it's, it's less than what the five year average is. And when you see a positive number, it means that it's, it's higher than the, the five, five year regional average. If you go down.
Tim?
Yes?
You got a mistake there.
Uh-oh. Back it up. What was that?
Rural Water District number eight.
Oh, eight?
That should be a plus twenty.
Plus twenty six. Okay, sorry. Okay. Let me mark that. Okay. Page sixty nine. Okay. Go on down. Projected water demand in thousands of gallons going out to twenty forty is all I was able to do. And that basically breaks it down by water district. And I got that from the Kansas Water Office as well there. Go on down and talks about wastewater. The road network talks about the roads and again, there's no change there. Bridges and culverts, same with public transportation. I updated the, the public transportation one I, I updated for KC. Going down and it talks about area rail lines. There's a map there showing the area rail. Now Saline County relates to the others with, with regard to the rail system. Airport. And then it talks about going down. Public safety, I included, I didn't highlight it here, but I've, I've just wanted to read under law enforcement, the county is in the process of building a new jail facility to be completed in late twenty twenty three. Sheriff's Department has three divisions administrative. I made that correction there because we've grown quite a bit. Apparently Sheriff's Office currently, they, the, the plan shows only twenty three employees and they've grown by quite a bit. So, so I included a hundred and nineteen full-time staff, including the sheriff, under sheriff captains, lieutenants and corporals. And I've, under fire and EMS, I've got, oh, where did I put it? I put, I included our most recent radio upgrade that we did for the emergency services and that's in there. I've, I've included that. There it is. EMS community, radio communication system, that last. But it talks about parks, the schools and the, go down a little bit further. School district enrollment shows you the difference between twenty twelve and twenty thirteen and twenty two and twenty three. And the reason I, again, between, the reason I chose two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school years because that was the last time that this plan was, was updated with, with regard to the data. So I just kept their numbers as a base and then I just added ours for twenty two and twenty three. And we've, we did have, you know, St. John's Military Academy did have that closure and that and some additional things. We've, we were down five forty five overall students. And it basically breaks down the school district. And if you go down a little bit further, I think that might be it. Yep, that's it. Any questions?
Commissioners have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I love it whenever Kansas State is playing on TV. They always run a commercial and it's always K-State Slyna that they show. They rarely show the Manhattan campus, so I love that. I'm being, being a homer, I know, but I, I love that.
Any other questions for Tim?
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Comments?
And what I'll do is the, what Phil pointed out, and I also have some other, I've noticed a couple of other things as I was doing that that I'll have to correct before I take it to the, the county commission. But if, if you direct me to, you know, make those corrections, I can forward this on to the, the county commission with a resolution.
Need a motion on that, Tim?
Please.
Okay, have a motion to go ahead and allow Tim Hamilton to forward this on to the county commission for a resolution?
You just worded that so well. Yes.
Absolutely. Nice job. Nice job.
Was that yes a second?
Got both there.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Tim, good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. It's, it helps also when you've got a good document. The, the consultant that we had back in two thousand seven left a lot of good information and stuff for us to use. I didn't have to reformat anything. I just, all I had to do is just plug the numbers in. So.
Okay, Tim, do you have, we need to talk about meeting location.
Oh, yeah, meeting. We're looking at the fourth Tuesday of the month. This has come about because I think the city had also approached us recently again about possibly changing the meeting date. And the first thing we thought of was what, I, I think the last time we talked about this, I think a couple of you, and I think Paul had also mentioned it as well. He's not here to defend himself, but I remember him saying, he said the fourth Tuesday would work for him or the Tuesday would just because he felt it would be fair to me, which, you know, is, is true. But it would, the fourth Tuesday, it looks like that's the time when there's no, no city activities going on at all during that.
It'd be here in one oh seven, obviously, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I hope so. Any questions about that, gentlemen?
When do we think that might start? I knew it wasn't right away, but I was.
Well, if you, if you direct, if you make a recommendation, I guess they could make a recommendation to the county commission to change it or is this just something that they would just do on?
This is just something that if you guys have a consensus to allow us to move the meeting date, we would do so. And then the first meeting would be scheduled for January twenty fourth of twenty twenty three. So kick twenty twenty three off right. It does not mess with any of our publication requirements. So if we are going to change the meeting date, then this is a perfect time to do it.
Okay. Well, it's better.
Somebody want to make, make a motion?
Better than last time when they suggested Friday, which.
You're correcting that, sir.
I, I think that there was a little opposition to that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See a problem.
Somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
That we go ahead and agree, if I'm saying that right, that if the county commission agree, so deems it that we move the meeting to Tuesday night, the fourth Tuesday of the month?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, then moved and seconded it, we move the planning, zoning commission meeting to the fourth Tuesday of the month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you. Hopefully.
I'm being contrary right now, y'all.
I hope you'll show up.
Yeah, Tuesday actually works better for me.
Okay, so fourth Tuesday. And I would like to introduce Cora Lee Murphy. She will be taking the place of Kathleen.
Thanks for all your work, Kathleen. Appreciate everything.
Now I'll be able to, to miss some meetings because you won't be able to call my wife.
I have introduced her to your wife so she can flag her down in the hallway.
Well, welcome and have a good trip home to your home country.
Hong Kong.
To Hong Kong? Have a good trip home?
Thank you.
Hope you've enjoyed your, your stay in the United States.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, good. Tim, anything else?
That should be it.
Here, a motion to a?
I have a motion that we adjourn.
Adjourned.
I'll second. I can get that one right.
Then moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Well, you can, you can sit here.